Partridges in character. It's just not pretty.
Right? Hello. Oh my gosh, I love that you're waving. To be perfectly honest, I would be disappointed if you weren't waving because it's awesome. They don't let me wave anymore and it's kind of a thing. Yes!
Who stifled you waving?
That's awesome. Yay. Well, welcome everybody. We'll call the December 13th, 2022 Regular Meeting of the Foxborough School Committee to order. And first up is an opportunity for open public comment that we have every meeting, and we also have the opportunity, I'll remind folks, to send things into the community inbox between meetings, anytime, and then those messages do go out to the entire committee and admin as well. So, I don't believe we have any, okay. So seeing that no one's here for open public comment, we'll move on to the second agenda item, which is approval of minutes. We've got two sets. The first one is the November 14th meeting of the Policy Subcommittee. Those like the Policy Subcommittee and the Budget Subcommittee are all open public meetings just like this one, and so we do post those and then also post the minutes.
So, I would like to propose one change to these meeting, to these minutes. The Subcommittee members present were Mr. Richard Pearson and Mr. Rob Canfield.
Thank you. Are there any other changes or questions or concerns regarding those minutes?
Move to accept the minutes of the Policy Subcommittee from November 14.
Second?
All in favor?
Do, do I vote?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
I think we would, yeah.
Well, I wasn't present, so.
Yes, and I should say, I've been remiss into saying that the full committee will be here, Ms. Reamond is, was stuck in a mediation, so she'll be along shortly. Up next, the October 18th meeting, our regular meeting minutes from October 18th. Any questions, addendums, concerns from the committee? Or anybody? Okay, seeing none?
Make them make a motion that we accept the minutes from the October 18th, 2022 meeting as presented.
I second that.
All in favor? It's 400. Those are both accepted, those should be posted online very soon. Moving on, yay. Teaching and Learning Highlight, which is very popular and very weighty. IGO Girls on the Run, and I'd welcome up anybody who is gonna speak to that. Dr. Berdus, if you're here to introduce, that's fine.
I would love to. So we have our Principal, Ms. Danielle Morrissey, and our teachers, Stephanie Benedetti, as well as Linda Pointimani from the IGO, along with some fabulous runners who are gonna be coming up and joining us at the front table. Maybe you can walk up to the table, you can sit in the chairs, and then stand around your friends that might be sitting in the chairs. And then, yes, you're small enough, two of you can fit in a chair.
Yeah, probably give, awesome. And girls, I'll give you a quick tip, the mics, the microphones are live.
Two people per chair.
So they are going to be talking with you about something that Ms. Morrissey brought to the IGO Elementary School, and our fabulous special educator, Stephanie Benedetti, and Linda Pointimani, our wellness teacher, led this fabulous group here, Girls on the Run. They're gonna tell you what it's all about and what they were able to accomplish. So Ms. Benedetti, Benedetti, I will turn it over to you.
Sure, so I was lucky enough and had the privilege to coach these amazing girls. We worked for 10 weeks, we practiced two times a week, and we, not only did we run every time, we had some fun, but we also learned some really important life lessons, some girl empowerment, and really just how to be a good person and a leader. And I'm so proud of how hard they worked every single day, and it was a true joy to be able to coach them. So I'm going to let the girls introduce themselves, is that's okay with you guys? So why don't we start with you, Iz?
My name is Izzy.
My name is Hannah.
My name is Emma.
My name is Lexi.
My name is Brielle.
My name is Audrey.
My name is Sophia.
My name is Anna.
My name's Nadine.
My name is Soph.
My name's Greta.
And that is our team. We're missing a few of our teammates and our other coach, Mrs. Potimani, but they're here in spirit, I'm sure. I will turn your attention over to our little PowerPoint, if that's okay with you?
Just point towards the window.
Oh, I forgot, he taught me how to do this. Okay, so here we are. Girls, what are we doing in the center circle?
Um, like, usually we first talk before, when, usually when we do these meets, we talk about what we're gonna do, because usually we do an activity about something important every, like me, we do.
That's right, thank you so much. This is just a cute little mugshot of us all, smiling and posing. What is Girls on the Run? Girls on the Run is a program designed to inspire girls of all abilities to recognize and embrace their inner strength and make meaningful connections with others. That is so true within this group. We, as coaches, we use physical activity and discussion to build social, emotional, and physical skills while encouraging healthy habits. So we had a really nice time, we're gonna make sure that this continues at our school. This curric, it's a, it's a research-based curriculum that we followed. It was really, really well organized and well-designed. It helped us to understand ourselves as people and valuing relationships and teamwork, and recognizing how we have the ability to affect the world around us. We did a really nice community service project. Does anyone wanna share what that was all about? Go ahead, Greta.
Um, so, we, the aftercare students, they used to go up to the gym on Tuesdays and Thursdays, but that's the time that we practiced, and so they couldn't go up to the gym and run around. So we, each, each girl had a partner, and we did a station that had, like, a different activity, so like, some girls did reading a book, some girls did relay races, one girl did cheerleading, and then each aftercare student went to each session to play.
Yeah, so we helped organize a fun afternoon for our aftercare kids and their teachers to give them a little, little break, and we were able to lead them through some really fun activities. Let's see, if we're gonna move on. What are the IGO students saying about Girls on the Run? Go ahead, Soph.
It's like, really fun, if you join, then you would actually know the experience, not saying to say anybody bad not joining, but as soon as you join, you're like, uh, these are like your sisters, and every single time you run, it's so fun, you get to do fun games, and...
Amazing.
It's amazing.
Nice job. Anyone else wanna chime in? Go ahead, Brielle.
It's ki, kind of like what Soph said, they're like your sisters now, and you, like, can't leave them, you have to stay with them. And, what's your question?
I, Bullet Number Four?
Yeah.
Always wear your crown? Can somebody tell me what that one is?
I got it from one of my friends, like, 'cause like, um, if you, like, feel comfortable, you could just pretend you have a crown on, and you could, like, um, get out of your comfort zone.
That's great, thank you.
Awesome. Anyone else wanna add something else? We heard from you, Melissa. Go ahead, Audrey.
At first, we didn't really know each other, and we weren't good friends with each other, but then when we started doing Girls on the Run, we were able to know each other better, and we became friends.
Awesome.
Pretty special. All right, and the last part is our amazing slideshow of our entire season.
Yeah, you can be the greatest, you can be the best, you can be the King Kong banging on your chest, you can beat the world, you can beat the war, you can talk the Gargoyle banging on his door, you can throw your hands up, you can beat the clock, you can move a mountain, you can break rocks, you can be a master, don't wait for luck, dedicate yourself and you can find yourself. Standing in the Hall of Fame, and the world's gonna know your name, 'cause you're fire with the brass flame, and the world's gonna know your name, and you'll be on the walls of the Hall of Fame. You can go the distance, you can run the mile, you can walk straight through hell with a smile, you can be the hero, you can get the gold, breaking all go make a sleep on that could be broke, yeah, do it for your people, do it for your pride, you're never gonna know if you never even try, do it for your country, do it for your name, 'cause there gonna be a day when you're standing in the Hall of Fame, and the world's gonna know your name, 'cause you're fire with the brass flame, and the world's gonna know your name, and you'll be on the walls of the Hall of Fame. Be a champion, be a champion, be a champion, be a champion of the Hall of Fame. Be students, be teachers, be politicians, be preachers, be believers, be leaders, be astronauts, be champions, be true seekers, be teachers, be politicians, be preachers, be believers, be leaders, be astronauts, be champions. Standing in the Hall of Fame, and the world's gonna know your name, 'cause you're fire with the brass flame, and the world's gonna know your name, and you'll be on the walls of the Hall of Fame. You can be the greatest, you can be the best, you can be the King Kong banging on your chest, you can be a giant, you can beat the war, you can talk your giant, yeah, banging on.
Five, six, seven, eight, who don't we appreciate? Not the king, not the queen, but the Girls on the Run team!
Hey, two, two, three, Girls on the Run is so not late! We're gonna crush that 5K like we're walking the Hall of Fame!
All right.
Yeah, we did add stuff. Anyone have any questions for us? Go ahead.
Does it run in the spring as well?
Um, we're actually just gonna keep it for the fall, it's gonna be Fall at the IGO, we feel like we wanna keep it something special, and we don't want to lose its novelty, so we're gonna do it every fall, for sure, yeah. So, we'll have some kids moving on, but we'll have our third graders coming up and helping our, our, our next batch of Girls on the Run kids, so, it's exciting. After seeing the video, I wanted, I wanna do the spring. I miss these kids.
And then, but, yeah. Girls who are in the 4th grade, raise your hand. All right, have you given your teachers and advisors advice?
What do you mean by that?
In terms of, like, 'cause you want this thing to continue, right?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, so you should, you know, you give them, give them some advice in terms of, you know, for the program and whatnot, 'cause they'll listen to you, third graders, where are you? Raise your hand. All right, you ready to be leaders next year?
Yeah.
I mean, you already are, but, okay.
Yes.
Are you gonna recruit?
Yes. Yeah.
Good.
We're ready. I kind of wish it continued on to 5th grade, so I could still do it.
Well, the interesting thing about that is, if you have an idea, you can always pitch the idea.
Maybe we should start our own Girls on the Run? Yeah. Like, make it for every kid that wants to do it, but still only girls.
Who are, but also on the run?
Yeah.
But, yeah, both.
Girls.
You want, you want both, that's essential.
Yeah, girls.
Understood.
Only girls.
And...
We don't want, we don't want boys. It's called Girls on the Run, we don't want boys. We only want the girls. Are any of the, are any of the boys jealous yet?
No, no, no.
We want the boys to be jealous, it's our point. You get the point?
All right, girls.
All right.
Do you get the point?
What do we say for welcoming us, welcoming us here today?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanna thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to give you one more final thank you. So, we, our school committee meets a couple times a month, here in Foxborough at the Town Hall, and we sometimes meet once a month, like this month, but what's really important about your excitement here today and your presentation is that people get to watch us in the community. And two of the last words I heard were leaders in the community and teamwork. They came across things, so it's really important for your excitement and your energy, and we really appreciate that, and it's important, you're doing a big thing for the town of Foxborough to tell everyone in Foxborough what you're doing and what you love. So thank you for being part of that, that's really huge.
Thank you so much. Thank you for having us.
And I'd like to add thank you to your buddies, 'cause I know you had parents that were running with you for the 5K. I was glad that I got to just watch from the sidelines. And, so thank you for your parents that were your buddies in running, and then also, I believe we had Ms. Cassily and Ms. Howe. Is there anybody else that I'm missing, other teachers from IGO that ran the 5K with you? Mrs. Pointimani, yes, and Ms. Benedetti, so thank you to them as well.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ready?
Thank you for being here.
Congratulations. So proud of you. I'm gonna get you a microphone, Brielle.
Right?
Thanks again.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for coming, parents as well.
And thank you, Ms. Morrissey, our principal who brought it here. Thank you.
Exactly. It's a great program.
Very cool.
Moving on with more bundles of joy. Next up on the agenda is our superintendent update, Dr. Berdus.
How do you follow that, first of all, right?
That's great.
So I just have a couple of quick updates. One was an email about our flu clinic that took place, we had a great turnout this afternoon. We actually sold out on our flu clinic.
That's good.
That took place today. But we did send out, I sent it out yesterday on behalf of all of the nurses, that our absences are up, we're seeing a lot of different things. Flu-like symptoms, we're seeing stomach illnesses, those kinds of things too. So if your child is exhibiting any of those symptoms, to please, you know, check in with your nurse at your school if you have any questions, but to keep them home, because there are a number of things going around right now, so we just wanted people to be mindful of watching for any of those symptoms with their children. Also, again, on the flu clinic, thank you to our Board of Health and our Public Safety for partnering with us to be able to provide those flu clinics. It's clearly that people are taking advantage of them, I know I did myself. As far as, we've got lots going on this time of year, last week was a very busy week. We, I had my community superintendent's coffee that took place the same night as our Budget Summit here at the Town Hall, so kind of did, we scooted out, Dr. Burrows and I did quickly to go to that over at the library, and then had the Budget Summit, which we'll get into that a little bit more in the budget presentation. Had a great presentation by Dr. Elizabeth Englander out of the Massachusetts Regression Center at Bridgewater State University. She came and spoke with parents about managing your child's screen time, talking about mental health as far as with topics that go along with social media, as well as how to avoid social problems, and just some real concrete strategies that she provided with parents, they had an opportunity to ask questions in the end, and she always just gives such great tips and advice. So that was at the high school, we had about, I would say about 35 people that attended. You know, the question is always going virtual for a presentation like that versus being in person, as far as the numbers, so that's something that, you know, we're continuing to explore, what, what's the best way to, to reach as many people as we can? But her presentation, and she's known around the country and the world, quite honestly, so we're just lucky to have her in our backyard here in Massachusetts. And then also our holiday concert at high school, that was fabulous, I know I saw some of you there, Thursday night as well, with our band, chorus, and orchestra. And then prior to that, Ms. Chantel Wiley, who's our Metco Coordinator, had offered a program for our parents to come in and talk about trying to get back the host program, where students that are in our Metco program, if they're staying for events later on, that it's not conducive to the late bus, or it's something that's gonna be the next day, to having a connection with the resident family here in Foxborough. It's something that we had many, many years ago, and she's trying to get that up and going, and I know Mr. Donovan also put that in his newsletter as well, to see any families that are interested in being host families and building those connections. So that was a good turnout as well. I don't know, Dr. Burrows, if you had anything else to add from, from that evening, as far as the host program and what we're trying to?
Uh, no, I have nothing else to add. Other than that, I would just add that we, we did invite, we had our Metco families come ahead of the holiday concert and had a little meet and greet as well, so we're really trying to build that connection between our Metco families and our resident families.
And then we have our Grade 5 concert, actually, coming up on Tuesday of next week, I think. And then, after the New Year, we'll be opening up kindergarten registration, so those of you that have elementary students and you have neighbors that are going to be five by August 31st, be watching that, watching for that registration in January. The sooner that we have people register, that really helps us, particularly as we're talking about budget and classrooms and all of that, so. The, the last one I would mention is that we have some vaping presentations that are coming out for students, middle school and high school students, that's gonna be taking place on Monday, December 19th, for students. And what's, what's a little bit different about this one, Rebecca Fidler, who is a mental health, licensed mental health counselor, will be providing these workshops for students in the month of December. We'll also have a presentation for families in January, on the 25th. But we're sending out questions for parents as just conversation starters, to talk with their students about, well, what did you take from the presentation today? And to give them some background that will help hopefully get that dialogue going at home, because a lot of times it might be you ask your, I can speak from my own experience, "How was your day?" "Good." "What'd you do at school today?" "Nothing." You know, you just don't know what kind of conversations you're gonna get, but particularly where we have talked about in our Culture and Climate Survey data, with vaping coming from students, coming from staff, and coming from parents being a concern, this is a presentation we're bringing forward to talk about that with students directly, and that will be in different assemblies, like 5th and 6th graders will be together, 7th and 8th graders will be together, and then the high school students will be in one assembly. But it, again, is really to talk about the addictive behaviors, particularly in young youth, and we want that dialogue to be happening with families at home, but also to give them some of the tools and strategies to have those conversations.
That's good.
So that's about it, any questions?
Is that presentation available online, the one at the high school that?
That Dr. Englander did?
That you had 30 people there, do you make it available on?
No, that, that was not recorded, it was just in person.
'Cause you were saying...
She does have great resources on the Massachusetts Aggression site for parents, so if there's anybody that's wanting to follow up or to look at different, even books to read, in even, like, books that are written for students, there's some great resources that she provides.
Thank you. And thank you for getting the word out early on the vaping thing, I think, as, as our Culture and Climate Survey said, that's on people's minds a lot, so thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you, Dr. Berdus, I appreciate it. Next up, Mr. Donovan, with Foxborough High School Overnight Travel upcoming, which is a nice change to see, as we open up even further.
Good evening, everyone, thanks for the opportunity to be here.
Good evening, everyone, thanks for the opportunity to be here. So this is a, a list of pretty familiar trips for approval. Some of them are tentative at this point, so the cheering, the Cheerleaders trip, the DECA trip to Orlando, the essentially Ellington Festival, and the Track, Lox International in New York. That has not occurred in, in many years. My understanding is that the track program used to attend pretty consistently. And, but that had stopped at some point. And so that, we have some new coaches in our program, and they're looking to return to that, if possible. So they put it here now, knowing it's a couple of seasons off, and it's still very much tentative. And the French exchange trip as well.
Nice. Any questions?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the proposed overnight trips for the 2022-2023 school year. And I don't know, do we have to, can we include the 2024 tip, and there's tentative, or? And we'll include the French, the proposed French trip on for 2024 as well?
A second.
All in favor? All right, that's 500.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan, for the organization here, I appreciate it.
You're very welcome, thank you for the opportunity for our staff and for our kids to take these trips. I do want to just give you one quick update, so you had previously approved a trip to England for February?
Correct.
And the itinerary has changed, the vendor has combined that trip with another trip. So our students were going to be, originally scheduled to be in England for the entire week. They're now gonna spend part of that week in England and part of it in, in and around Paris. We gave them, they were given some options to delay the trip, to go later in the year, or to go to, to take their original itinerary. And the students and families had some input on that decision, and chose that option of doing Paris and London over recreating that thing, so I just wanted to provide you with that update.
That's fine.
Do we need to vote on amendment of that?
I don't think we do, because it's just we, we have the spot for the, yeah, that becomes more of the details of the trip. But thank you for the update, I appreciate it. And I'm glad, I'm really glad that they had a voice in adding that.
That sounds amazing.
That's nice.
It seems like a very nice Plan B.
Yeah, you're right.
For sure.
If your fallback is to also go to Paris, yeah, I think that's a pretty.
Thank you all very much.
Can I make one suggestion? The Lox International trip, when athletes travel out of state to a location like this, it's good to get ahead on those, to make sure all the approvals can be made with the State Athletic Association.
Absolutely, yes.
I'm sure they're probably on it, but they haven't done it for a long time. I've heard of situations where people set up out-of-state travel for an athletic team, and it can run into some challenges.
Yes.
So good to get, get ahead on that one, just to make sure you cover all the bases.
Yeah, and this trip is new to many of us, so we have a couple of steps we're gonna have to do before being in a position to, to move forward.
Just so that you don't get too far down the road and realize that you, there's a step that's missed along.
Bonafide teams and all sorts of stuff.
Yeah, great, great.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, next up, I'm sorry, next up, school committee vote to appoint a school nurse, Ms. Kate Woods.
So as you're aware, that there are certain appointments that you do as a school committee, and the nurse is one of those positions. But nurses, in additional to having their RN, they also have to have the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education certification, which takes a little while to get that. So we have them appointed as essentially like a long-term sub with their RN before we can move to that actual appointment. And so Kate Woods, who's the nurse, fabulous at the high school, she's just been such a welcome addition and has done so much. She's now got her certification through DESI in addition to obviously having her RN. So it, you have her resume and everything within your packet, but it's just a formality, honestly, at this point, so to have the appointment by school committee.
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Kate Woods to the position of school nurse at the high school.
A second.
All in favor? It's 500, look forward to making it official. That's nice, yeah, that's excellent.
She's fabulous.
I know, and we're glad, we're very lucky to have her.
For sure, we're very fortunate with every one of our nurses here, and the team just continues to get stronger and stronger, if that's even possible with the group that we have.
She started in April '21 and she still came back, so.
That's a lot, that's something.
That's like she's still standing.
Right, that's a tough time to start. Well, moving on, we have some work from the Policy Subcommittee, which is a subset of the school committee, on a couple of different policies. Who would like to introduce them?
Would you let me to provide just kind of a, an overview?
Yes, sure, Dr. Burrows, thank you.
So the policy, we'll start with the first one that you had, which is the Non-Discrimination and Harassment File AC policy. We have, you have a number of policies currently in the policy manual. And in 2020, August 14th, actually, of 2020, so right before we were opening up in the hybrid, you know, learning and all of that, there was a new regulation law that came in that changed. And we didn't even, the grievance procedures for harassment and civil rights and all of that changed at that point, which we've, we followed those, but your policy itself needs to be updated to go along with those procedures.
Right.
And you actually didn't even receive from MASC an updated policy until February of '22 on this. We have all of those procedures, they're being followed, they're on our website, but your policy itself needs to be updated. What that essentially did by revising that policy is it shortens a number of your policies. You're able to rescind a number of them, because it's taking, it's delegating the responsibility to myself as the superintendent for those grievance procedures. And so as a result of those new regulations, it really lengthens if you are in a Title IX investigation. It takes away a single person who is like in the investigator, there's multiple personnel that are involved now. So it becomes lengthier, and the one policy that you have, you're able to rescind the much lengthier policies that have all the grievance procedures and everything, because it falls to the superintendent, and putting that together, that was done with your legal counsel. And again, that's on the website with those, but it allows you to then rescind file policy ACR. It allows you to rescind ACA, because it is all covered within those procedures, as well as ACAB, which is providing definitions, and again, the grievance procedures. So your Sub-Policy Committee, Richard and Rob, Matt, they, they, I mean, they can speak, but they looked at the MASC policy, they looked at the policy that legal counsel provided us, as well as what our current policy is. So I'll turn it over to Richard and Rob, but that's kind of the, the umbrella and the, the reason for updating it this time period.
Thank you for the context.
If I, I'm repeating, I think, what you just said, but this one AC policy brings all the AC subsets into one, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so especially like the second paragraph of this policy, it kind of, it loops them all in and references all the title, Title IX and the Title VI and everything. So it kind of brings them all into, into concise and clear policy for us, so that's the intent.
Right, and in addition, if there are changes to process now, they're not embedded in the policy, they are separate, because this references the processes that are outlined in the specific handbooks, which means that if something changes, we don't have to go back and update the policy for that. So it should be more efficient going forward.
Can I ask questions before? So has legal counsel looked at this draft of it?
This, this draft is the one that they provided, and then we reviewed and approved.
So what, I wasn't quite sure of the definition here in the first paragraph where it says the district provides equal access to all designated youth groups? What is a youth group?
I would assume.
Any, any of our groups, there are gonna be students in any of our clubs, any of our activities, any groups that we have, that there's not discriminatory practices.
Okay, the reason why I'm asking is I'm just trying to figure out the definition of a youth group, because I know from, you know, do we use that definition anywhere else in our policies? Because immediately I looked at that and kind of thought, there are a lot of religious youth groups that are called youth groups. So that made me kind of look at that and think, okay, is it talking about that? I wouldn't think it would be. We're talking about student organizations.
Yes.
And so that's, just to make sure that everybody's kind of clear on that, and not something that could potentially be misinterpreted.
And I would interpret it as, as specific to youth groups as opposed to not youth groups, right? If it just said designated groups, that would be.
There's a lot of designated groups in the school.
In the school district, this is just youth, that one, that statement.
But is it student, I guess, part of the thought, is it, is it student organizations? Or is it non-student organizations, but still people that are youth?
Well, one of the things, you need to do a first read of the policy itself. So I'm wondering if, when we get to that point, to ask that, and then, since it's just the first read this evening, to follow up exactly on what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then the, the open question then would be, do we need a, do we want a qualifying word?
Tighten up the.
Between, you know, between designated and youth, whether it's school-based or whatever.
Right, because I just didn't understand what designated, designated by who? By the superintendent, by somebody else?
There should be, right, you want this thing to be free of those questions when anybody reads it.
Right.
Understood, okay.
Especially because it's not just, it's, from what I can understand here, the original, just the non-discrimination policy just referenced students, was just about students. So this opens it up to students, parents, employees, and the general public not tolerating discrimination. So it makes it much broader. And so that's just my concern, I'm just making sure we know and understand what it's referencing, as well as all of those people that it's supposed to apply to understand exactly what we're referencing.
That's excellent. Are there any similar questions or points of discussion that people want to get into, or should we do the reading for?
I think it's probably better to do the reading.
Sure.
Read, and then, and then if there's any other points of discussion in addition to what Ms. Raymond brought up, let's, let's hit that. Who'd like to start with the reading?
Go ahead.
I'll start, I guess. Non-discrimination and harassment policy file AC. Foxborough Public Schools does not tolerate discrimination against students, parents, employees, or the general public on the basis of race, color, national origin, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, disability, homelessness, religion, age, or immigration status. The Foxborough Public Schools is also committed to maintaining a school environment free of harassment based on race, color, religion, national origin, gender, sexual orientation, gender identity, pregnancy or pregnancy status, age or disability. In addition, the district provides equal access to all designated youth groups. Consistent with the requirements of the McKinney-Vento Act, the district also does not discriminate against students on the basis of homelessness. Want to keep going?
Sure.
Or we can switch paragraphs, you want to go?
How about you do this policy and I'll do the next one?
Oh, there we go, okay, we'll do policy. The superintendent shall designate at least one administrator to service the compliance officer for the district's non-discrimination policies in education-related activities, including but not limited to responding to inquiries related to Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, Title IX of the Education Amendments of 1972, Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973, Title II of the American with Disabilities Act, the Age Act, MGL, Chapter 76, Section 5, MGL C151B and 151C, and 603 CMR 26. Inquiries about the application of Title IX to the district may be referred to the district's Title IX Coordinator, to the Assistant Secretary of the Youth Department of Education, or both. Foxborough Public Schools' policy of non-discrimination will extend to students, staff, the general public, and individuals with whom it does business. No person shall be excluded from or discriminated against in employment, admission to a public school in Foxborough, or obtaining the advantages, privileges, and courses of study of such public school on account of race, color, sex, gender identity, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, age, homelessness, disability, or immigration status. In addition to designating at least one administrator to handle inquiries regarding the district's non-discrimination policies, the superintendent shall adopt and publish one or more grievance procedures for addressing reports of discrimination, harassment, and retaliation under the protected classes identified in this policy. If an individual interested in filing a complaint that they have been discriminated against because of their race, color, sex, gender identity, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, homelessness, disability, or immigration status, their complaint should be filed in accordance with the district's grievance procedures for discrimination, harassment, and retaliation. The student handbooks and grievance procedures shall identify the name, office address, and telephone number for the compliance officer, or officers, for the above-referenced statutes and this policy, and be posted on the district's website. Legal references, Title VI, 42 USC 2000D, 34 CFR 100.3A and B, EEOA 20 USC 1703F, Title IX, 20 USC 1681, 34 CFR 106.31, and 106.34, and 106.35. Section 504, 29 USC 794, 34 CFR 104.4. Title II, 42 USC 12132, 28 CFR 35.130, IDEA 2004, 20 USC 1400, 34 CFR 300.110, NCLB Title III Part A, Section 3121CL and capital C. Title X Part C, SE S 721, 722G4, Mass. Constitution, I assume, Amendment, Article 114, MGL C 71A, SCC 76, S 5, 603 CMR 26.03, is amended by Chapter 199 of the Acts of 2011, MLGC 71, 370. 42 USC 2000C, that's, that is, 42 USC's 2000D, same thing, 20 USC 1701, and MGL 71, Section 84, the attorney should have read that.
I could listen to that all night. Way to go, Mr. Pearson.
I must say I needed to, but I got it all.
No, it's all in there, it's all in there. All right, points of discussion or further review between now and our next meeting and second reading. Does anybody else want to follow up on the point that Ms. Raymond brought up, Paragraph 1?
We can certainly get clarification, I do think it means designated youth groups. Because what we're saying earlier in the policy is that we are not, we are making it available to any group regardless of what their position is. So I think it specifically says designated youth groups, as designated by the superintendent or the person appointed, and we can certainly get clarity on it, but I think that language is intentional.
I'd just like to understand what the definition of it is.
Yeah, no, certainly, certainly, but I think, after, you know, rereading it and listening to Richard read it aloud, I think that is the intent.
So.
The question would be, do we want to clarify, sorry, you go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think we want to clarify, because this is, this is an important policy, and it's something that is gonna be looked back at when there's issues, when there's problems, when there's potential lawsuits. So you need to make sure that the language is clear to everyone involved, so that there's not any nuances later on.
Is the, and I'm not the one you want wordsmithing this, or anything for that matter, but we're talking about designated school-based youth groups, is that what you're, is, is something like that or akin to that?
Right, I mean, it, the point behind it is, what's the goal? What are we trying to say there? Is it only school-based? You know, is it designated, and the question then becomes, is we can assume it's designated by the superintendent, but it's not necessarily that. but it's not necessarily that clear, you know, as to say, we could have somebody come in and say, well, this is a designated youth group by, you know, another definition somewhere.
Like the Scouts are not a designated school-based youth group, but they're a youth group.
Right.
Understood.
So I would, I would say, maybe the word helps us. My initial thought was that I don't think a school committee can make a policy for an outside-the-school district youth group, right? I mean, just as a default. We can't set a policy as a school committee that impacts a youth group in the town of Foxborough.
Well, it's providing equal access.
Yep.
So it's saying access to the schools.
Right, I get that.
So that's where, I just want to make sure we're not opening ourselves up to something where an organization comes in and says, we're discriminating against them because we're not providing them access to the school.
Understood, yeah, I do understand.
And that could be problematic.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I get it, like it.
But I, I do not think, I don't think it is student-youth group. I think it is youth groups. I mean, I think that is intentional for that reason. So we can certainly get clarification on that. And the key would be, if somebody makes a request for access, the reason, if that, if that request is denied by the superintendent or by the designated appointee, then we need to make sure that there's clear reason behind it that doesn't indicate discrimination. So, but I do, I do think it, this is not intended to say students or groups that are necessarily associated with Foxborough Public Schools may have access to this. We do open our schools up to groups that aren't necessarily associated, student groups or youth groups that are not necessarily associated with Foxborough Public Schools from time to time.
I understand, and that's, that's why I'm saying, is we just want to make sure that everybody's in agreement, and that we're not creating a more complicated issue, but we're clarifying.
Delineating where our responsibility is.
Correct.
Okay, I understand.
All right.
Can we ask the attorneys to look at that, with that lens?
Yeah.
With this question, the question is good. The question's a very good question.
Absolutely.
And half the attorneys, if they have, if the wording here gets to the end, yeah, I think probably the attorney should look at it.
Yeah.
It's a good question.
With that question, and I do have a couple of other questions.
Please.
So...
That's why we're here.
I just, in just reading through it, I noticed that, so if you just go to the sentence before where it talks about free of harassment based on, and it lists all of these issues it is based on, the listing does not match the listing of tolerate discrimination of the sentence before, and it also doesn't match, if you go down to 1, 2, 3, 4, paragraph 4. So is there a reason why they don't match?
Got it.
You know, you've got pregnancy, or pregnancy status is, I didn't go through it with a fine-toothed comb, but I know right there that is missing from the first sentence and is missing from the fourth paragraph. Is there a reason why that's different between those? And if so, why?
And then if not?
So, and, that was just my question, is, is there, and there could be a point as to why it is, because there's different designated classes for discrimination versus harassment, and I just want to have a good understanding of why that is.
Awesome. I mean, I understand the question. That's worth further explanation. And then, the, that leads me to, potentially, another half of that question is, if, if there isn't a specific reason for them not being parallel, should we make them parallel?
Well, if there's a reason, we need to understand what that implications are, because it could be a valid reason. I just don't know what that reason is.
Yep.
So without having that knowledge, it's kind of hard to evaluate it. And that's why I was just asking the question. And if this is something that came from a specific source, is just asking, you know, follow up on that piece. Because, you know, my first looking through it is, I would think that all of those areas would be the same throughout.
Yeah, I get it.
No, it's well explained. I understand the question.
Can you reference it back? I'd love an attorney to reference it back. You know, you say it in the first paragraph, and could you say it as referenced in the initial statement?
Sometimes you can, sometimes you can.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
So...
What else?
And then the other question was, just looking back at the original nondiscrimination policy. We have in that very much kind of a, you know, the school committee is making a commitment to the community, and it has these listing of, you know, intentions, which is missing, is missing from the new policy, and I'm just wondering, what are we losing by taking that out?
Mm-hmm.
If anything? You know, because it's, it's saying here, you know, encourage positive experiences and human values for students and youth and adults, and considering in all decisions made. It's really more of a kind of direction, while this policy, this nondiscrimination harassment policy is much more what I would consider kind of a legal reference, is kind of like, okay, here's the, like, the legal basis versus the original one had that, but it was also a direction from the school board saying, here's what our policy, here's what we want the school department to be doing.
And my interpretation of that is, that's intentional. That's removed because it's intentional. We talk about that first part, our vision, the way that we want to operate as a school committee, and how we want our schools to operate. We talk about that in the other documents that we produce at the beginning, coming out of our retreat every summer. That's the culture and climate of our schools that we want to promote as a school committee and support. By taking that out, none of those things in steps 1 through 6 are really actionable policy things. They are, as you talked about, our vision for what we want. The policy now is much more, this is policy, this is how it operates, this is where you go and reference what the procedures are. So I think that was an intentional...
Just to weigh in, it does put it back to each student's, each school's handbook, which in a way is going to give a little bit more of this direct-to-the-public policy. Where, you know, handbooks will give more bulleted, I'm not on subcommittees, I don't know, but that's how I read it, sort of, this is where the school committee stands, sort of broad-based, but then putting it to the schools to come up with their own...
So I would understand what you're saying here. I would just say, have we looked back to see if any of these pieces that's in that nondiscrimination piece, are they all referenced back to our goals, to other areas, to student handbook? I just want to make sure we're not, you know, taking something out that doesn't exist also somewhere else, if that's what kind of like, you know, the intent there. That's all.
I understand, I understand the question.
I understand moving things around and having this be a very kind of like, hey, this is from a legal perspective, we're looking at, this is our policy in regards to people going back and looking at, what does the discrimination or harassment policy specifically say about what we're doing and integrating into all of the federal laws and state laws and all of that? I get that. I just want to make sure we're not losing something that we assume is somewhere else.
That's really thoughtful, thank you.
It's very thoughtful.
And the idea really is to get back to, at a procedural level, as far as school committee, this is to go back to say, this is the procedural piece that you have, you know, on your plate, but really, all of the procedures themselves are being thrown to the superintendent to develop those. And those, if you look through the grievance procedures for Title IX or for civil rights, is a very lengthy document.
Right, we want to incorporate, not reiterate everything.
Yeah, right.
Absolutely.
Fair enough, yeah. And then, well, last thought I had on your, the third point you brought up, Ms. Raymond, is those, the listing there of 1 through 6, those are, seems like it's an ample and useful preamble to most of our policies.
Right.
And our functions, you know what I mean? It's nicely stated, but, and then the question is...
I think, I actually do think, they may be the same wording, but I do believe that this is all covered in, when we talk about, I forget the name of the actual document that we agree on and sign off on every summer, but that, the intent of that language is covered in that.
Okay.
Just on a quick side note, as I'm reading this, Bill, I think that this policy update, when and if it does pass, and we make this, may qualify for MIA requirements. I don't know if that's something anybody knew about or was thinking about, but just throwing it out there.
Oh, thank you.
And the other thing that your policy subcommittee did do is they looked at the policy that MASCE put out, looked at, and the attorney, your attorney also looked at the MASCE policy. And this one is more succinct than the MASCE policy.
Sure. Well, then, if...
I'm sorry, I had one thing, and it didn't stick out until, again, until Richard read it. The last paragraph, do we need to stay, is it student handbook only, or is it also employee handbook?
It's in, well, it's, it's in both. I mean, and it references, it'll reference back to the link on the website, to our procedures.
Okay.
Is that kind of where it says grievance procedure, is that...
Right. District grievance procedures.
District-wide, is there a different, I would assume there's a difference, grievance procedure for employee versus student?
It goes, and it lists it all out. There's all kinds of flow charts and, you know, forms, and the process is very lengthy now compared to what it has been in the past, because you're having multiple people involved instead of the single investigator model.
So I would say that you're correct, it should say student and employee handbooks and grievance procedures.
Right, that's what I, that makes me feel better to put that in there.
Okay, then let's, thank you.
Thank you for all the work on this, it's an important policy, so.
All right. So student and employee handbooks?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I saw, I saw, yeah.
So it's referencing both, because that's, the point is that this isn't just a policy that applies to students, it also applies to employees.
Yeah, yeah. So then, if subcommittee or most likely administration is able to cross-check with counsel, then would we be ready, and then we could discuss that next meeting on January 3, and then be prepared to move on to second reading, or further questions that we have?
We can do it at the next meeting, yeah.
If that's okay.
Or we can go again.
Depending on timeline.
Right, right.
Okay?
Yeah.
Depending on timeline, so, yeah.
I don't think that is going to be a problem as far as talking with your attorney to get those clarifications and...
And thoughts on it, yeah, thank you. I mean, I do appreciate that we use the MASCE, I also appreciate that we use counsel, we look at other districts, and then we end up making something that makes sense for us. And I appreciate that tradition that you all bring to it as administrators and past committee members, so let's keep that up.
And then the other part of that would be rescinding, when you come to the next meeting? It's just understanding that you would be, if you do the second read, and you're all in agreement and vote it, the other action item would be rescinding those other three policies.
Exactly. And that's, yeah, I was going to ask that, thank you, that's a, then that's a vote. We should pass the policy, and then also rescinding. Excellent, thank you for the work on that, that's a lot of shuffling.
Can we just say that for the next agenda item is referencing those policies in the agenda that we would be rescinding?
Absolutely.
So that everybody can read it ahead of time, so we're not, and we'll have them in your... Yeah, exactly.
No, that's good, thank you. Ms. Chris, do you...
Are you voting to move this one for your second reading?
That's where I was going to ask, do we want a pending review of this, do we want to move this along to a second reading? Are we comfortable enough with it to get the answers on those questions? If so, somebody want to move to put this on to a second reading?
I'd like to make a motion to put the, sorry.
You got it.
The nondiscrimination and harassment file A.C. to a second reading.
Thank you. We'll second.
Shall consecutive.
Shall consecutive.
You want to second that?
Shall second.
I can second it too.
No, but that's, it's better to, thank you. All in favor? That's 500. Again, thank you for the work.
Can I make a request? As we do this and we come up with other policies we're going to rescind...
Do you want to read more?
No. Could we, could we get those maybe a little bit in advance? Our next meeting is the January 3. If we grab everything on the Friday of that weekend, I mean, should we give ourselves a little bit of a runway, is that possible?
We can send those out as informational to you tomorrow, so you have that.
I think that might be wise, let's get them to us early so that we can kind of have them in front of us, as opposed to just cramming them in that weekend, you know, it just, it might be valuable for us.
Yeah, because I mean, they're all on the website anyway, it's just a matter of Janet putting it together and sending it to you in an email, and can send those right out to you tomorrow.
Do you mind? Yeah, thank you, thank you very much.
I appreciate that.
I probably could have gone to the website myself, too, but I appreciate it.
It's easier to get it in a package this way.
Yeah, great, good, and then we'll have the whole thing in our heads together.
Yep.
All right.
Well, that's wonderful.
Thanks.
Regrettably, the next policy has fewer legal references.
I picked wisely.
Pretty good. Let's move on, let's move on to policy JH regarding student absences. Mr. Canfield, would you like to do a reading?
Well, Dr. Burden, do you want to set this up at all?
Oh, sure.
This is Mr. Donovan's attempt to make this more, to provide clarification and...
Oh, yeah. This was brought by Ms....
So really, the read, when Rob goes through to read it, he's going to be inserting one word, and what we have where parents provide explanation for an absence...
For written.
We want to insert the word "written."
Got it.
And the reason for that, just to kind of give the context here, is it's setting it up in the future for, when you think about excused absences versus unexcused absences. As an example, if you're going, if a student's going on a college visit, you know, it's, they're writing, it's a college visit, they have that, and so then it's, it's understood. If a student's out sick, you know, they're out sick, you've got that, but we need a written document instead of just a phone call that's coming in to explain what the absence is. And again, in the future, it's a matter of thinking about, well, what is excused versus unexcused?
Right. And just having thorough, consistent communication.
Can we waive the reading if it's only one word altered?
Nope. We can waive second reading.
Okay.
But, yeah, that's, I just wanted to ask a question, thank you. Well, then that's good.
Okay.
It's been a while since you appeared on stage.
I'm ready, yes.
Good question.
Okay. So, file JH, student absences. Regular and punctual school attendance is essential for success in school. Parents of children attending our schools have the responsibility to ensure that their children attend school regularly in accordance with state law. Students may be excused temporarily from school attendance for the following reasons. One, illness or quarantine. Two, bereavement or serious illness in family. Three, whether so enclamant as to endanger the health of the child. Four, for observance of major religious holidays. A child may also be excused for other exceptional reasons with approval of the school administrator. A student's understanding of the importance of day-to-day schoolwork is an important factor in the shaping of his or her character. Parents can help their children by refusing to allow them to miss school needlessly. Accordingly, parents will provide a written explanation for the absence or tortures of child. This will be required in advance of an absence when possible. In instances of chronic or irregular absence reportedly due to illness, the school administration may request a physician's statement certifying such absences to be justifiable. Student Absent Notification Program. Each principal will notify a student's parent, guardian within three days of the student's absence in the event the parent or guardian has not informed the school of the absence. Each principal or designee shall make a reasonable effort to meet with any student and that student's parent or guardian who has missed five or more unexcused school days. The school day shall be equal to two or more class periods in the same day in a school year. The meeting shall be to develop action steps to improve student attendance and shall be developed jointly by the principal or designee, the student, and the student's parent or guardian. The parties may seek input from other relevant school staff and/or officials from relevant public safety, health, and human service housing and nonprofit agencies. Dropout Prevention. Any student who has not graduated from high school will not be considered permanently removed from school unless the principal or his or her designee has sent a notice to the student and the student's parent or guardian. The notice shall be sent within five days of the 10th consecutive day of absence and shall offer at least two dates and times within the next 10 days for an exit interview with the superintendent or designee, the student, and the student's parent or guardian. The notice shall be in both English and the primary language of the home if applicable. The notice shall include contact information for scheduling the exit interview and shall indicate the parties shall reach an agreement on the date, time of the interview within the 10-day timeframe. The timeframe may be extended at the request of the parent or guardian, and no extension for the meeting date shall exceed 14 days. The superintendent or designee may proceed with any interview without a parent or guardian present, provided the superintendent has documented a good-faith effort to include the parent or guardian. The superintendent or designee shall convene a school staff to participate in the exit interview and shall provide information to the student and, if applicable, the student's parent or... the student's parent or guardian on the detrimental effects of early withdrawal from school, the benefits of earning a high school diploma, and the alternative education programs and services available to the student. Legal references, Mass. General Law 76-1, 76-1B, 76-16, 76-18, 76-20.
That was so easy. That ending was like so easy. Nice. I know you did.
All right. Are there any things, aspects of this people want to question, clarify, discuss?
The only change is that one word. Are those two words?
Yeah. Okay, well then with that, if the committee is comfortable moving this on to phase two, second reading, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to move on to the second reading of student absences, file J H.
My second.
Thank you. All in favor?
I.
Five zero zero. And we'll move this on to a second reading if folks are comfortable. We'll slate that for next meeting on January 3rd. Thank you. Excellent. Next up, oh my goodness, we're two minutes ahead. Preliminary discussion of the proposed FY '24 budget. Mr. Yugna, Dr. Berdus.
I'll start it off a little bit, but I think the majority, if we're going to have Bill do the presenting here. But to thank Sarah and Michelle as far as our subcommittee and coming in and going through all of the different documents with us and the questions that were asked, really good ones. As far as the timeline here, being that we had that subcommittee meeting on the 8th already. We also already had our meetings with the town, two meetings that took place in November, and then the joint meeting that we had as well with the revenue forecast for the future. This evening is marking our preliminary discussion on the budget. As you know, we'll have a couple more meetings to discuss and go back with any questions that you have or any additional information. And then we do not know at this point in time the AdCom meeting date. But we do know that we will have our budget request to the finance director on January 3rd. We have our school committee meeting on January 3rd. That was the one that was changed from the 10th, just as a calendar note there. And that on the 24th will be the public review and your vote, where it has to be voted by the end of January. And that will go before town meeting, which is scheduled for the 8th of May.
Dr. Berdus?
Yes.
Does the town administration, do they give you a sense of when AdCom will have all the budgets out to the advisory committee? And, and then the other ones are like their book that they get?
I don't know that take, because we're not, we're, we're doing it later this year than we've ever done before. Bill, do you have any idea?
They said they would be publishing before the end of January, so.
Okay, that's fine. And that, to your mind, that does that, that doesn't put a kink in our timeline?
No, we're ahead of them.
Yeah, well, I figure we're fine. Yeah, okay, but, okay, thanks. Sorry, Dr. Berdus, thank you for entertaining that.
So I think just to frame it, the overall message is, is not surprising to all of you sitting here and what we've continued to focus on, which is providing a high level of service for our students and the supports that are necessary for them to continue to be successful, adjusting to our shifting student populations that we have and we think about related needs, particularly in the area of special education, and our work with our plan for success and co-teaching and providing those opportunities for more inclusive practices to take place. The philosophy itself is, it's right in line with our historical approach from the past. And that it was, it is one that really speaks to that, that we have a strong commitment to education. And as you have been all along in supporting education and the programs that we have currently and maintaining those excellent programs are really what is prioritized here. You've got the four pillars of success that you're very familiar with from our plan. It is aligned to all of those when it comes to the supports for students, when we think about the courses, when we think about meeting their needs from an English language population, from a special education population, from technology, all of those things. And you'll see some shifts when we get to that a little bit more. It is focusing on maintaining reasonable class sizes. It focuses on, in addition to the district's academic and strategic initiatives, but also looking to address increasing costs that continue in special education. When we see them, when it comes to facilities and infrastructure, addressing those costs as well and some adjustments. You'll hear about software and licensing and the implications that come from technology and how curriculum instruction, when we think about programs and the changes to licensing programs, in addition to facility costs. And then importantly, that it's, it allows us to meet all that we have to meet when it comes to the Department of Education. Everything is outlined. And the last thing is that it also, we've talked about a lot, the different positions that are supported by these grants that are sunsetting. And it is assuming these particular positions because of what is outlined in our plan for success, the supports that we need for students, and we'll be talking about how those particular faculty positions that were supported by state and federal grants that are going away, that we are prioritizing those within this budget. So the budget process itself, Bill, I'll let you take it from there.
So as we've described in the past, basically, we develop the budget from ground zero up. We know all of obviously the staff we currently have. We develop what their, what the requirements will be with that staff going forward. There are positions that, you know, may be eliminated over time. There are positions that may be added over time, all based on what the student needs are and the curriculum base that we're trying to accomplish. Part of the budgeting assumptions are that, and we've had this conversation year after year, is that while we don't know who's retiring June 30th of this year, we have to assume that there will be retirements and that the people retiring versus the people that we would hopefully hire at the lower ends of the scale, bringing them in, would have a reduction. The town has accepted $125,000 assumption on an annual basis, so we build that into the budget as well for those retirements. And as Dr. Berdus said, the, the changes to any kind of outside resources through grants or revolving accounts, we have to highlight those and make assumptions based on that as well. Kind of passed.
Did I skip one?
So the increase that's being presented in this budget is $1,184,581, which is 3%. The Board of Selectmen's suggestion, or the, actually, the town manager's suggestion is a 3% level services and limited enhancements. That would equal $1,187,442, so you can see we're slightly under it, but we're within the ballpark of what they've asked for. There's a lot of moving pieces here, and I'll, I'll give you a, an encapsulated thing at the end. But basically, what you're seeing here is the number of changes that we make within staff on an annual basis. I think this is meant to highlight in a lot of ways how we are looking at each one of those positions as we move forward and what its needs are within the curriculum base. We have had to make a small adjustment within the, the finance department, basically to cover the workload in there. We were paying the, the same amount, basically, in overtime, so we've gone from part-time, a few part-time employees that were .75 up to one case of full-time and one that was a .85 up to a full-time. So that's the adjustment there. Again, financially, it's pretty much the same to us, but it's just actually giving them full-time positions. Changes in, in, you know, educational assistance. We have, over the last couple of years, built into the program where we're looking to go to the inclusive model, having more highly qualified staff. And in doing so, in some places, we've removed ed assistants to cover the cost of that. And in some cases, it's because the ed assistant was no longer needed based on changes within the student body. So you'll see a number of spots where we're making changes from, you know, from a delivery point of what we actually need. We don't just, because we have the body this year, bring the body forward to next year. In many of these cases for ed assistants, to be honest with you, we have not been able to hire. So these aren't people that we're looking to let go. It's positions that, since the pandemic, have been nearly impossible to hire. So there's, there's to my knowledge, nobody in this grouping that is somebody that's a hired individual today that won't be here next, you know, next year unless they choose to. So you'll see that part of ours is to reduce in, in the educational assistance and add, you know, a few new teachers in that model to, you know, enhance the special needs programs within the school. We also have a custodian increase of .5 at the burl. We're at 2.5 currently. It's a 60,000 square foot building, similar to the IGO, which is a three-person staffed. We thought we might be able to get away with it, and we tried, and we went through a period of time with the 2.5. But to be honest with you, the square footage of the building and doing the nightly cleaning throughout the entire building, and especially with the increased, you know, emphasis on cleaning with all the illnesses and, and, you know, post-COVID still concerns about spreading of germs and stuff. It's really going to require three to do that. We also have opened up the burl to outside youth organizations for use of the gym at night, so that puts a little bit more emphasis on the, the cleaning of that wing of the building, you know, in a, in a period of time. We have a number of changes on the elementary level, the burl, and, and the IGO as far as how we rotated world language teachers. Again, that's to fill the need based on the use within the, the students' programs. So you have a .4 reduction, an increase in the burl and a .3 reduction at the IGO, minor change. We had a math interventionist that basically, we could not, it was actually a .5 math interventionist in a .5 sped position. And it was pretty much impossible to find the combination person. So what we've done is we've morphed it into a full-time math interventionist and eliminated the sped position that was the other .5. So you'll see that one down further in the list as we go down. The high school, again, is doing, under the inclusion model, looking to reduce two of the EA positions, again, that aren't filled today, to hire an inclusion teacher as part of their change to the curriculum and advancing it to be more of a college-prone, you know, preparatory system and enhance what the kids are able to achieve within the classroom versus being in pullouts or in other scenarios.
Bill, is there, I'm sorry, in a situation where we're looking to change the learning model from more ed assistants to sped certified teachers, what's the, what's the trade-off point, like the financial equivalent?
It's, it's a little over two. It's like probably about 2.2 ed assistants to a teaching position.
Thanks.
You know, and, and, well, you know, initially it would be less than two, but over time it's going to be slightly over two, so.
That's a, that's kind of like the.
That's why we're kind of, yeah, we look at the, that is the base point. And again, you know, in some cases, if we couldn't afford to eliminate a ed assistant, not in this particular year's model, but, you know, but we needed the teaching position, we would be here because it's, it's one of the things that we would be strongly pushing for. You know, the continued push as far as, you know, special education, you know, you'll see under that line for the .2 at the high school, world language change. Basically, these are all sped positions now that are based on the programs that we're looking to maintain or improve. So, you know, in the, the pre-K ed assistant, that's a student-based requirement that we have. Again, hoping that we'll be able to fill the position as far as that goes. The burl special ed teacher, again, we're doing a swing there for two ed assistants for that special ed teacher to advance that. Taylor School, we have an educational assistant that no longer is required within the school, so that's the reduction. .5, you know, sped teacher, you know, was the one I, I mentioned above as far as the reduction there that was added for a interventionist. The Hearn PAVE program, we, we, this program basically is an extension of the original PAVE program there. And it's basically to help us be able to provide a curriculum for a number of kids that would otherwise need to go out because we wouldn't be able to service them. We feel that this has always been our better choice when possible to keep kids within the districts, within their cohort of friends, and obviously give them the best educational opportunity we can by having the right staff for it. The high school one is a curriculum revision in their, the way they're going to actually deliver the, the program. As I said, we have a number of ed assistants on the high school level that we're not in need of right now. From transitioning from last year to next, or this year to next year, so it's about four and a half ed assistants there, unfilled positions. A .2 increase in, in speech therapist, again, that's a caseload base. Each specialist within the district is analyzed for who they're servicing on an annual basis. And we, we kind of balance that against what the appropriate level of students that a individual can actually manage during their day's work and still give the services that each kid needs. So in this case, we need .2 more for speech. The high school interventionist, we were unable to fill anyway. It was a grant-funded position. So we're going to eliminate that one. Part-time nurses, basically, we had that under grant-funded. You know, we've gone up to 5.8 in nurses. We have 1.4 at each of the two bigger schools. The big push there was to obviously have the additional services during the midday lunchtimes, you know, when many of the kids need to have checks for diabetes and other things that accomplish that. We, the grant gave us a little bit more money and it was very effective during COVID to be able to, because even some, some of the nurses could even get sick at times. So having that .5 that we could rotate between buildings was helpful then, but we think we can, you know, the other priorities are above that at this point. And another health grant, 1-0 ed assistant, that we're going to eliminate. So this gets you a reduction overall from last year's budget of 6.025 FTEs. And I think that just kind of shows you to what level granularly we take it down to, to get it. But as Dr. Berdus, you know, has pointed out, even with that, we are still funding a 5.5 positions, as you'll see, of grants. So these are the positions that we feel, especially coming out of the, the whole period with COVID and the interactions with the students and the higher needs that we've had, that grants were very effective in helping us deal with. The first one actually just is, is again, is a student base. Our ELO population has increased. And having the right caseload for that, for the, what we'll have is three full-time, to be able to manage that seems to be the right thing. We've gone from 2.5 social workers, the 1.5 that's here got us up to four. Again, they're working extremely hard to deal with the students' issues and needs at this point in time, as well as families around that. We had one special ed teacher at the Hearn, again, part of our program, things that we needed to, we feel we need to keep. A .5 therapist, we, occupational therapist, what we had was a previous position, which was not a certified position as a Coda. We moved that to an OT position. And basically, the, it required the equivalent of another .5 to cover what an OT would cost versus. What we've gotten out of that is significantly higher than what we were able to get previously under the model, plus with the needs of the kids. Obviously, as you know, during COVID, one of the things that we did was we went to a one-to-one district and, which put a lot of pressure on our IT department. Again, through the grants over the last couple of years, we were fortunate enough to be able to hire someone to help us fill that. We currently have one person that is full-time, basically fixing laptops. And, you know, it's, again, we were busy without that as far as dealing with the network issues, dealing with, you know, the classroom issues. But now we have to maintain those computers. We are fortunate that our IT staff under Aaron Hare has gotten his staff certified so that they can actually do the repair work under warranty work. And all we have to do is, is file for the parts replacement. That does a couple of things for us. If we eliminate this position, then, then many of these computers will have to go out to outside service groups, and it takes time. And it takes time to get them out there, to get them back and get them in the kids' hands. In, in cases, some of the, many of the cases, we're able to turn these things around in the same day. You know, assuming we have the right parts to do it and we do stock parts, basically they've given us some ability to do that through the warranty process as well. And then we had two point two teachers that we were effectively funding through grants that were sped teachers that we have now elevated through our process as, as full-time and will lose the grant funding. So five point five positions previously grant funded, no longer grant funded, are within the budget and we are still down six FTEs year over year. You know, I think the general concept of the budget is, is again, service-based staffing adjustments, as you just saw. We literally are going building by building, operation by operation and curriculum-based by curriculum-based to determine what staffing is needed to go as we move forward. We continue to try to have the highest level of staffing we can, even though we have to have adjustments from state and federal grants, which are not consistent year to year. We try to at best, and you'll see in most of our expense lines are consistent with last year. But you will see a few that, that, that will stick out and we'll kind of give you those lists as well. Most of them are around the bigger items. They're around the utilities. They're around special education. Some minor ones are around just supplies. As we all know, inflation has hit everything we've done. And we've been able to manage that to a degree, but there's a few areas that we're adding a few dollars to try to, to survive through that. And again, our district-wide facilities, the, we were fortunate under the Esser Grants to have a lot of resources when it came to PPE products, when it came to cleaning, filters and all that. We feel that at this point still, we want to maintain the advanced level of filter changes that we've been doing for fresh air within the buildings. And so again, we're going to have to pick up some of that cost just so that as the grants go away, we can keep it there. And again, just continue to monitor the facilities themselves. So again, the major components, as, as we said, were, you know, the six point oh two five reduction. The, the larger expenses, there's a few that are a couple of thousand or, or less. You know, the three elementary schools, basically their supply lines are in total being increased by 9,500. What we did in that was partly look at the equity between the three buildings based on the enrollment to make sure that there was a similar amount of money for each school to operate it under its supply requirements. Out-of-district tuition is, you know, an increase of about 42,000. Technology, you know, licensing, you'll see a reduction in this one area of about $39,000. But you're going to see an increase in another area, which we will describe below. Transportation and fuel, we, we are doing okay. Obviously, we've gotten hit this year much harder. Diesel was at $5 last week when we made our payments on that. It was the highest we've ever seen. But that's all starting to come back a little. So we're estimating at a little bit lower level, you know, than what's running today and trying to cover the, the fuel costs for basically all of our buses and our facilities vehicles. The utility cost basically is under electric. Electric has been our biggest gainer. The town has put together programs that basically take our contracts out three years. But the last contract that we renewed last year has an increase in it. So obviously we're seeing that. We also saw and continue to see again, as long as we maintain the level of fresh air and other things that we're trying to do within the building, that we're using more electricity than we would have pre-COVID. Again, I think it's too early to make any kind of revisions back to the world as it used to be. So I think the, the cost is well-served to try to protect all of the children and staff that we have. Contracted services is really probably the one major inflationary area that we're getting hammered on. And that, when we say contracted services, as you, you know, we go out to bid every year. In, in some cases, we are able to bid for three years out, but in, in, it's all for the HVAC systems, electric, plumbing, generators. You know, just security, a number of different areas. And their, their increases over the last couple of years have been pretty significant. Again, their manpower has gone up price-wise, their goods, as far as their materials have gone up in those contracts. Basically are labor plus materials at cost contracts. So that's why you see a fairly, fairly large increase there, probably one of the biggest we've ever seen, which is 75,000. The, the curriculum, we're going to, it used to be, we referred to it as the textbook adoption line previously. Okay? I think we all know we don't buy textbooks like we used to. So we've, we've kind of revised the name to be more reflective of what we're actually doing. It's actually a curriculum and program adoption line. And what's changed and what's gotten much more expensive in this, in the old days, it was you bought a book and that's all you did. Now what you're doing is you may be getting a series of books for the classrooms, but you're also getting all the online resources that say book online so the kids don't have to carry it back and forth. And which, so we're, we're facing a lot more in licensing fees for those program adoptions. So what used to be an annual review of about $75,000 is now running well over $100,000 when we do one or two programs. This year we've got science and technology, but you know, each year we try to do two of them. The, the secondary line underneath that though, which is our, our bigger issue really is, and a lot of this was covered for grants over the last couple of years. And a lot of this is also not just the textbook adoption, but it is the fact that we're one-to-one. So that your licenses now are for every student, every teacher, not buying, you know, 50 books, but you're buying 200 licenses for that class or that grade. And so what we're in a cycle now of is basically tracking what our recurring costs are on an annual basis for those licenses and for any of the additional program, you know, professional development that comes along with that adoption in the second, third, fourth, fifth year. And right now, what we're looking at is just about $92,000 for next year to cover what we've done in the last couple of years over this and what we'll have to do for next year as far as the adoption goes. As I said, there was, there's a number of smaller minor changes that in total equal about 28,000. And then a request was brought forward to us, which we, we met and talked to the subcommittee about, and we've gotten additional information on. And that was for the schools to participate in the funding of a, an SRO on our side, meaning we would basically, they would charge us this for it. So the charter school already participates and, and puts in point five for one of the SROs as well. What the chief has done, and this year has been the largest increase, but basically has three patrolmen and women that are involved in the schools daily, plus a sergeant. Typically, we've had in the past only two. And that's really kind of pushed his resources now to not being able to do what he does. But he considers that the schools are a priority for the police department. But the cost now is at other programs he has to operate within the, the town. And we felt quite honestly that, you know, mirroring what the charter school is doing is reasonable. And at this point, we feel we can afford it within the budget. And that basically gives him one that's paid for by the two schools. And then whatever other efforts he has to put in basically comes out of his budget side.
That's, that's. Is that, Bill, is that, is that a typical, whether you know or not, like a funding split with?
I, I think quite honestly, it depends on the district you're in. Some districts actually fund the entire SROs within their school budget. And some districts, you know, did like we did where we funded nothing in the past. I think this is kind of a, it's a happy medium at this point. Again, it also, you know, not only does it put us having a little skin in the game, but it, it also makes it, you know, when we call for issues, you know, a little bit more supportive as to the fact that we are also part of, of the program as well. So. And I look at it, we've, we have done as a town and, and departments, I mean, we charge town departments for things like facilities and IT and, and, you know, other things like that because we monitor and run that whole game. So I kind of look at it as this is, there's, there's two sides to this whole equation where if we are truly as a town going to work together and, you know, support each other, then there is support between departments too for different resources that need to be had. And, and again, this is a resource for us as a school district and a school community to support the kids that are, that are in need as, as well as to support the schools when, when there is a need. So.
And I think that's the, the key part there is it's an expense. But it's also the partnership that we have and all of the support that we have that's far above a point five position. That's just again, showing the partnership that's there and that, that collaborative nature of what, of how we operate as a town.
No, it, it seems very fair. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Comparison we do year over year kind of shows the, the increase for the FY24 budget over the FY23. You have a little bit of history here from FY15 forward. Again, the three percent is what was published or pronounced at the finance meeting the other day with the Board of Selectmen. And, you know, we will stay within what their recommendation is. Population change, you know, again, we're still on a slight downward trend, not, not significant, but our belief is that we will be down a few more for next year. Really depends on what happens with some of these developments that they're now kind of pushing around town. I think we're in good shape in every one of our buildings as far as if anything does come at us increase wise. We have the, the ability and we have the class sizes that can, that we can manage with that kind of a change.
And the other piece there too, when you look at our out of the district numbers there, I mean, that, that's a really important piece when we think about the programming and all of the work that's been done and the special educators that Bill was talking about before. By having highly qualified special educators, when we think about our PAVE program or our TEAM program, that's allowing us to keep students in the least restrictive environment here in the district instead of sending them out. And then you can see that reflected in those numbers there.
And, and one point that wasn't on one of these slides at this point, but I think is extremely important for you to understand. Corey's done a great job with his staff as far as developing these programs and working through it. You can see obviously we're going from a high of 38 back down to 28 out of district. I think families appreciate the fact that their students are able to stay within the district, number one. But number two, what we are also facing and what, even though we're only, we're going up by 42,000 in our tuition, out-of-district tuition for next year. We are actually getting hit with a 10% increase in our BICO tuitions and a 14% increase, which is being dictated by the state who's doing the approval on the private school tuition rates, which by itself, those two numbers are, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars. So that's already incorporated in our numbers, you know, where we've, we've been on topic, but we've all, you know, complained to the state on the fact that they're even willing to entertain such high increases. Yeah, 14%. And, but we've seen, and I've talked to you about this in the past. We've had some programs that have gone individually to the state and gotten 20%, 25% where the rest of them all stayed the same. This is the whole group.
On their own timetable.
Coming across. And so it's, it's a, I don't want to say it's an out of control, but it's, it's not one that we have control on. And so we are, obviously we've talked to our legislators, we have.
Written letters to them to both Jay Barrows and Paul Feeney. And the Massachusetts Superintendent's Association is advocating against this as well with this 14% increase.
But it's, it's highly likely that it will get passed. So. The, as you know, our budget also has a, a component that some school districts and towns don't do. We think that's the right way to build a budget. So our budget's an all-in budget. What that refers to is the fact that any money that we receive in grants from revolving accounts or the circuit breaker are already built into this budget. So you're seeing that expense in total. And then what we do is reduce our requests from the town by what we receive in these grants and revolving accounts and circuit breaker. The one thing that is, is saving this budget and allowing us to keep those positions that we noted that were grant funded previously because we've lost, as you can see, nearly $500,000 in all those Esser Grants and health grants and stuff that aren't coming forward for next year, is the fact the circuit breaker has been greatly increased. One of the things they did was that they have always had a requirement for us to submit for our transportation of these out of district. Now, transportation for out of district, as you see in the budgets, over $800,000 to transport these kids. The state always said that they were going to kick in and just like they did with the tuition side and have a reimbursement. They haven't done it until now. And they finally came up with, for this year, it's $363,000 that we're going to get reimbursed for last year's expenses, which will basically help us in, in, you know, making that grant change. And they also have increased to a small degree, the circuit breaker value on tuitions. So that's what's, you're seeing a change from circuit breaker last year at just under 800,000 to just over 1.2 million dollars. That's quite honestly, the only thing that's allowing us to keep those positions that we believe are critical to the kids' needs at this point, without which we would have had to, quite honestly, make, make more cuts to, to stay within the limitations of the budget. This is just a quick pie graph so you can see how we spend the money. Very similar to last year. General education is 54.25% of our total budget. Special education is 28.19% of the total budget. And then the smaller areas, biggest one, which is plant and operation is 7.02%. Transportation is 2.93. Central administration is 2.76. Technology is 3.08. And athletics is 1.77. So it's just kind of a quick visual as to, you know, the majority of our money is going directly into the classrooms and supporting the curriculum and the, and the programs.
And then as we move forward, it's obviously, we're going to continue to review it as we do and then look for any revenue changes. Any questions that you have? We have the next meeting on the third, as we said before, as far as to go back. Any other additional information or questions that you have, we'll talk about that now and then again, then as well. The important deadline is that, that 24th of January to vote it because that's by policy. You need to vote it by that time period.
Right.
One of the things that I wanted to add and I should have added earlier.
What?
That long list of all the changes in, in personnel boils down to five lines in total. It boils down to point three seven five in the business office as an increase, point five in facility, point five in facilities, 1.9 in teachers because there were pluses and minuses in that. Eight point five educational assistance as a reduction, a point five nurse reduction and a point two speech. So that, all that whole page of things really boils down to, you know, just a handful of things that we're actually addressing. But again, you can see it's, it's.
Where it's coming from.
By building, by program, by requirement. So.
Go ahead, I have a question.
I don't, I don't have a question, I just have a comment.
Yeah, a question. Quick reminder for anybody who might be listening, circuit breaker, is there, what types of things to have circuit breakers? Is there, is there two circuits? Is just the one? And it's, it's overall sped costs, right? And that's when it's based, just, yeah, if you could just remind us.
So the way circuit breaker operates is that effectively under the state, it's additional funding above the chapter 70 money that comes to us. It comes to us the year after you've spent it. So what they do is they analyze our June 30th filings as to everything we've spent. The special education department basically completes an entire document of all of our expenses by student, which includes some expenses for, that we would do in-house as well. But mostly it's, it's the out-of-district tuitions and the out-of-district transportation. And under the, the program, which changes from year to year, I believe last year's base amount, if I'm not mistaken, was 40, around $46,000 that they assume the first $46,000 of that out-of-district tuition is borne by the town. assume the first forty-six thousand of that out-of-district tuition is borne by the town. Anything above that, they're willing to do a split on. Most of our out-of-district programs, unless it's through BICO, which is, is probably the more affordable action, it's the closest, obviously, transportation-wise and everything, most of them are, in the BICO, are slightly above that forty-six, so there's only a limited amount that's actually circuit breaker-eligible. But then again, you have the larger programs where they can run anywhere from a hundred thousand to four-hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
And again, getting a percentage back from the state, which is seventy-five percent last year, is a fairly good percent, that they'll, they'll take above that forty-six thousand, they'll take it, and they'll take seventy-five, they'll fund, and twenty-five we fund. So, it is a, it's a, you know, it's a way of, of providing each district with funding back based on a specific need versus just throwing money into the Chapter 70 and then hoping that one district didn't get destroyed because they had a high level of need versus another district that didn't. So, it's probably the fairest vehicle you can have. Obviously, every district would like it to be a hundred percent, but it's not going to be funding-wise. And they, they basically, you, that percentage is driven by how much money do they have in their pool versus how much demand has been sent to them. So, some years, that could be seventy percent, some years, that could be, you know, seventy-three percent, some years, it's seventy-five, is based on the pool of money that's in the state budget.
And by the legislature increasing that, allowing that fourteen-plus percent increase, does that increase the base?
It's gonna increase them paying seventy-five percent more of that fourteen percent. So, we'll be paying twenty-five percent of it.
Okay, thank you.
But again, we're gonna get back a year after we've spent it, so.
Right, and that's always a budgeting thing that you're, you have to, I guess, project out, right?
Right.
Because, yeah, we plan ahead, but we're getting...
In arrears.
Yeah, we're getting, we're getting reimbursed.
And again, we've had this conversation before. What, what the town has done, which I think for the educational side is, is probably one of the smartest moves to keep it consistent year to year, is we, on almost all of our accounts, we don't use the money in the year we receive it, we reuse, use it in the year after. So, we effectively have a one-year cushion. If we were to get totally destroyed by something, we actually have a year's worth of time to figure out how to deal with it.
Like the one year that we had five out-of-district students move in over the summer. We had that one summer, five out-of-district students.
So, it gives us, it gives us the ability to kinda shift and adjust and work with versus if we were spending it in the same time we got it, then we would basically have to go back to town. We have never gone back to town to deal with any of those issues. We've always had to do it, you know, within our budget process because of the way we're allowed to do it.
No, no worries.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, my only comment was thank you all. I appreciate all of the detail. I appreciate the creativity. I certainly appreciate that we are, we have a budget that stays within the, you know, the guidelines the town set, but we are continuing to improve the already, you know, high-quality services and education that we provide our students by the, by the creative, you know, movement around of the model and staffing for that. So, it, it's really quite remarkable, in my opinion, that, what, the work that's gone into this, so thank you.
I think, you know, we owe a lot to the, the rest of the school administration because obviously, we sit down and discuss this, you know, ad nauseam as far as what needs to be done, how are we gonna deal with the grant issues, what are we gonna do with this? And, and I think each one thoughtfully, you know, puts in their two cents as to what their needs are within their building, but also, you know, understands that the other buildings have needs too. So, I think it's a very, you know, congenial environment when we get together. Everybody knows what the goal is, and there's gonna be give and take as we go, so.
And I, I mean, I, I appreciate just, I've said this before, but in different ways, that, the, the level of communication that, that you hearken to, Dr. Berdus, Mr. Yukna, that, that, I mean, we, we were talking, even as a committee, I know you were talking about it as, as admin teams long before it, but even back in July, when we had our, our annual retreat, we were talking about looking ahead at this, and I really appreciate that you and your building leaders and curriculum specialists have gone through with a fine-toothed comb, you know, program by program to, to look at, see what we can reasonably afford to retain that is gonna provide the most impact for kids. And I am very, I'm, I'm pleased that, to see that, that there are some retentions here, given, given that the impact that you and your staff have said that they've had. So, I think that's really heartening. Comments moving forward? Thank you. And I also thank, 'cause I didn't earlier, members of our, our policy subcommittee for taking the time, because I know it's a lot, high-meeting season, and I know, Mr. Yukna, that you're at every single one of them, as are you, Dr. Baro, so I appreciate all the work that you all put in for it. All right, so we can look forward to discussing this, further questions at the next few meetings. Please do come with that.
And as, as we've always said, obviously, we'd like to make your meetings as productive as possible. So, if, in going through the details that you have with you now, you find any issues that you'd like to have, you know, more information on, you know, if you'd let us know before that, it would be very helpful so that we can pull together whatever that information is to, to give you what you need.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And speaking from personal experience, asking questions, they know the information backwards and forward, and they can get you anything with a little heads-up. Okay, well, if, if committee members are ready to move on, then we'll move on to our next agenda item, vote on the MOA for the Foxborough Education Association Clubs and Activities that we have in our packet. Dr. Berdus, Mr. Yukna, do you want to intro, or I can to you?
You can jump in here, then Bill can add any detail. This is the exact same thing that you did at the end of the school year.
Yep.
Because we have really delineated in the contract all of the clubs and activities at the high school level, and in order for MTRS, for our teachers to have them as pensionable, they need to be listed out. At the middle school level, they're not, unless it's like the musical, and so, by having them listed, it allows it to be pensionable, so it's, it's advantageous for our teachers. And this is just listing that out again, and it's, since we have a new contract, it's a, do this for the next three years, because the one that you did before was for the previous three-year contract.
Lovely.
Anything else that to add, Bill?
No, that's truly all it is.
Does any committee members have any questions or follow-up with that? If not, this is something we do need to vote to approve, so it entertained a motion to look at this.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the addendum to Appendix A of the collective bargain agreement for the middle school clubs and activities for fiscal years 23 through 25.
Thank you, Mr. Canfield.
I'd like to second.
Thank you, Mr. Donnie. All in favor? That is approved, 500. Thank you for the work on that and buttoning that up. Next, we have some donations to look at and vote on. Would like to introduce, if anyone.
So, I'll do the first one. The Iorio Charitable Foundation actually is a family, I believe it's a grandfather's company who basically has been following their grandchild through our school district and has made an award, if not annually, pretty close to the buildings in which the, the child was in. So, this is a very generous donation of seven thousand dollars to support the high school from the Iorio Charitable Foundation in, you know, to be used by the principal, you know, Haseen Fett.
That's excellent.
Can I ask a quick clarifying question?
Yes.
Are we making motions for each individual donation, or are they collective?
We should make them for each individual.
Good, Mary. If we're ready, I'd like to make a motion...
Please.
...to accept with gratitude the donation of seven thousand dollars to Foxborough High School by the Iorio Foundation.
I'll second that. Thank you very much. All in favor? It's accepted, 500 with gratitude. Thank you, Iorio Charitable Foundation. That's very generous.
The Foxborough Soccer Club, as you know, we're very fortunate in town to have a number of sponsoring groups under all of our sports, and in some cases, they feel that they wanna enhance the coaching with additional staff, and they have raised money to basically support so that, support that. So, in this case, this is the association funding a position of the assistant boy soccer